This is the Planning Board meeting for the City of New Brunswick for May 25th, 2017. We're all ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Pierre Checo.
Yes.
Clary Barber.
Yes.
Chris Stellatella. John Petrolino.
Yes.
Manuel Castaneda. Carly Newbauer. Nicole Burgos.
Yes.
Suzanne Ludwig.
Yes.
David Henry.
Yes.
Jeff Brown.
Roll call.
I just didn't roll.
I'm sorry.
All right. Let me cross that one again.
What's next? Public Announcement, Open Public Meeting Act.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act are applied with satisfaction if the annual notice will give sufficient notice of the time, place, content, and formal means that the planning board of the City of New Brunswick is to file with the city clerk in place on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Bayard Street in Brunswick, New Jersey, and who transmitted the official newspapers to the city in Brunswick, named at home in Tribune and Starletger.
Salute to the flag.
Salute to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the boards, May 8th, 2017, meeting.
Chairman, composite minutes, we're sent to all the members, unless there's any changes or additions, any motion to approve the in order.
Much pleasure. Say.
Okay.
Call in favor.
Hi.
Close. Minutes are good.
Old business. Cultural Center redevelopment associates, Urban Renewal LLC and New Brunswick Cultural Center Inc., Planning Board Dash 217 Dash 01 Site Plan and Subdivision Application pursuant to the standards set forth in the Cultural Center Redevelopment Plan for Construction, a mixed-use development consisting of theaters, office space residential units, parking facilities located at 9 Livingston Avenue, Block 12, Lots 1301, 1501, and 2301 in the zoning district C4.
Check before we get started with the application, if any board members know of any conflicts they might have that they want to put on the record for this application.
Just to be clear, a conflict would be if you feel that you have either a direct or indirect relationship, whether it's financial, business, or otherwise, with the applicant or any of the witnesses that are here this evening. If you feel that you do have a conflict, just state so. If you feel that you do not have a conflict, you are charged, as you always are, with fairly, impartially, and justly listening to the testimony that's provided here today based on the testimony and rendering your decision. Is there anyone here who feels that they either have a conflict, whether it's direct or indirect, or that they cannot fairly, objectively, and without prejudice listen to the testimony and render a decision on the application? Mr. Chairman, seeing none, I believe that there is jurisdiction on this matter, or review the notices that have gone out, they do seem to conform as to notice, as to jurisdiction, so the board does in fact have jurisdiction to hear the application this evening.
Thank you, we proceed.
Thank you, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso, here to present this application on behalf of the applicants and all the interested parties that are involved in this project. And this is kind of a little bit of a surreal experience, since this is our third shot at it, and hopefully we will be able to get through this this evening in a positive way. The project itself involves preliminary and final site plan and minor subdivision approval in order to construct a 22-story mixed-use building consisting of a two-level performing arts center containing two theaters, theater offices, lobby, public spaces, and rehearsal spaces, two levels of additional office and rehearsal spaces, and an 18-story residential tower consisting of 207 residential parking units. The project also includes a seven-story parking garage containing 344 parking spaces, together with a ballet studio and rehearsal space. And the property is as was indicated on the record, both by lot and block and address. The project itself is the result of the work product of the applicant, who is the designated redeveloper, which is Cultural Center Redevelopment Associates, Perremanuall LLC, and the project conforms with the Cultural Center Redevelopment Plan in all aspects. My intent this evening is to do what we have previously done, which is to present four witnesses to you, representative of the developer, our project architect, project engineer, and our traffic consultant. Hopefully, at the end of that testimony, you will agree with what our feeling is, that this is a vast, vastly tremendous project for the city, for its future, and for the downtown, and particularly for the cultural district. If the board doesn't have any questions for me, I'll call my first witness.
Just could, obviously this is the third time you're here on this. At the second meeting, we did incorporate the minutes from the April 10th meeting where we had a full hearing on this. Have the plans changed at all since the April 10th meeting?
They have not.
And so the minutes from that meeting could be fairly incorporated here with the comments from the public that were here that night.
That's correct. At this time, I would call Mr. Chris Palladino for testimony.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name, please?
Christopher Palladino, P-A-L-A-D-I-N-O.
Do you sort of know the name of this man?
Of course. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I disagree with Justice Scalia that the Constitution is as written, because certainly inherent in the Constitution is the concept of do-over. So I think we've kind of stressed those limits this evening. As I've said on two occasions, in this room and in several other venues, this probably is maybe the most important civic project ever undertaken in the City of New Brunswick. It not only builds on a very strong history of the New Brunswick Cultural Center, the New Brunswick Cultural Center of the District, the State Theater, the George Street Playhouse, the Crossroads Theater, but it allows us to, you know, really build, and not just buildings, but do things, important things, like build audiences and opportunities. Obviously, we're all aware that the George Street Playhouse and the Crossroads Theater have become terribly inadequate. While they may be charming and may have been the site of some tremendous and award-winning productions, they've been limited in how we schedule and how performances and the number of performances are done. So what this building does essentially is allows us through technology and design to do more performances on more evenings, making stage and rehearsal spaces available to more groups, and more theater, and music, and dance, and comedy, and lectures, and things that really do make the New Brunswick Cultural Center, New Brunswick just, you know, generally a great place. You know, the theaters will have fly spaces and trap spaces and wing spaces, and be able to be able to move scenery in and out. And what really makes these work things work is that we have a number of rehearsal spaces that allow us to, allow George Street, Crossroads, the Ballet, and now Rutgers to rehearse and not take up valuable space on the, inside the theaters. We expect probably most likely about 50 or 60 additional performances are already scheduled for those two buildings that we would not have had this year. The program allows the American Repertory Ballet to actually move its professional company to New Brunswick and do an entire season. They've had to move around the state and have been unable to actually offer a season in one place. It's for the first time, and you know, Mr. Kelso, wearing his, one of his other hats, has worked on this for a long time, for us to be able to truly integrate in a meaningful way the Mason Grove School for Performing Arts into our professional theater community in New Brunswick. Rutgers has a very, very strong opera program, and the Lyric Theater is designed to permit opera performances. The Ballet will use that theater because it has, you know, the appropriate wing space and depth of stage to allow full ballet and other dance programming. Rutgers will also be beginning its musical theater program, so they'll be able to use the program, the facilities. So we really not only have, you know, are building new facilities, but we're allowing us to build audiences, to continue to really, for New Brunswick to be kind of the epicenter of cultural activity in the region. This is a very, very broad public-private partnership, probably part of the reason that we've had to be here three times, because it's kind of hard not for somebody to know somebody. But it includes government, and the private sector, and the not-for-profit sector at all levels. It's, you know, starts with the state of New Jersey, New Jersey Economic Development Authority, at the county level, the county and the MCA are involved, obviously the City of New Brunswick, New Brunswick Parking Authority, and then DevCo and New Brunswick Cultural Center, and Crossroads of George Street, and Rutgers, and the Ballet are kind of the principal driving forces, and have played a variety of economic and other types of commitments to the project. So, you know, I think there's nothing greater than a community can do to invest in the arts. It's been a while since anything in New Brunswick has been done on this level, and I think we're really going to become the envy of the entire state and the region of being able to really take what we've done very successfully for a significant number of years, and really kind of catapult that to, you know, the forefront throughout the state. So, thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Palladino?
Not, at this time, I would call Mr. John Martin for testimony.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name, please?
John Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N.
And do you sort of know the name of this man?
I do.
Mr. Martin, you are a registered architect that lead in the state of Massachusetts, is that correct?
Correct.
And you are associated with the firm that, or Mr. Manfredi, who was here testifying twice before, and are familiar with the project plans and particularly the architectural aspects there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I believe for the record, we would indicate that the plans that have been submitted and that previously testified to are signed and sealed by a licensed architect from the state of New Jersey, but we offer Mr. Martin as a qualified architect in order to be able to provide testimony associated with those plans. And I believe you testified here.
Yes. Acceptable, the board.
Then, John, what I would ask you to do is, I'm just going to let you go through the building, or the plans, going through the levels associated with the theaters, also the residential component, and all the aspects associated with, you know, fleshing out what we're presenting to the board this evening.
Thank you.
And I believe also, I would say, there were, to touch upon some of the matters that were in the planning report, particularly with bicycles and so forth, so feel free to do that.
We will do that.
Feel free to do that.
Thank you. I'll start with the general site plan. At the bottom of the page is Livingston Avenue, George Street runs diagonally here, Bayard Street diagonally to the north, this is south, this is north. And the building addresses Monument Square Park. It has two primary entrances, the first to the theaters, the second to 207 apartments. Both of those are, they front onto Livingston Avenue where there's a dedicated drop-off for pedestrians, a bulb out to reduce the crossing distance of Livingston Avenue there, and strong connections to the park and to the Hellbridge Hotel. As we move around the block, Bayard Street, also a very important street in New Brunswick, is another principal facade of the building. It's where the 344-car garage butts the street, and what's particularly important is this entrance off of Bayard Street, which provides a pedestrian connection all the way through, inside, in a covered but open corridor from Livingston Avenue to Bayard. That provides a pedestrian link back to the fair and site and to the train, the Amtrak train stop as well. So it's a very important kind of urban through-block connector that we're facilitating here. All of the vehicular traffic, I'll let Chris Roach talk more about that, but all of the vehicular traffic enters the garage off of Bayard Street. There is an 88 stall, 88 rack bicycle parking facility off of Bayard Street as well, beside the vehicular entrance. So everyone approaching the building from the train, or from an automobile, or on a bicycle, will use this Bayard Street facade to come through to access the front of the theaters. Also important while we're here, both of these facades, unlike the two buildings that are there now, which are largely opaque and set back from the street, all of these facades come to the street, form a very important street edge, which I'll show you in a moment in some renderings that are very transparent. The objective here is to really bring the arts to the community, make it very visible, A little bit about how the, I should also say, all of the loading functions also happen off of Bayard Street. There are two loading docks that are shared between the State Theater and our theaters, and a third loading dock that primarily serves the residential and rehearsal space for the American Repertory Ballet.
Mr. Miller, before you start, this exhibit that you've now put up, we have not seen as part of our packet, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's been premarked as Exhibit A1?
Exhibit A1.
Thank you.
This is an enlargement of the front onto Livingston Avenue, showing the theater lobby. The theater lobby is about 5,000 square feet, it's a generous two-story height lobby. You come in under a big video board, which I will show you in a moment, past concessions and the bar and the ticket area, and into this two-level, 462-seat theater. Immediately to the right, down the gallery, is a second theater, and that's 253 seats, also tiered and at two levels. So this area here is the balcony, which gets to the balcony of both theaters. To the right, this area in the lighter gray, is about a 2,000-square-foot residential lobby, which becomes the front door, the living room, for the 207 apartments that are above. Those are accessed by an elevator core here. The elevator that gets you up to the balcony for the theaters is here. If I show you a little bit about how this building manifests itself on the park, Exhibit A2, this is a rendering from across the park, perhaps standing in front of the church. And as Chris said in his introduction, the purpose here is to really make this four-story podium that forms the base of the building, a transparent kind of shadow box for the arts. The lobby that is the primary entrance to the theater is here to the left, I'll show you an enlargement of that in a moment. The residential lobby is here, but all of these spaces that are illuminated here are 15-foot-high rehearsal rooms where theaters that are upcoming shows can be rehearsing while other companies are performing in the space. This top level is an office level for county offices, and so all of that facade is absolutely transparent, and both night and day, you'll be able to see into the rehearsal spaces, into the office space, into the lobbies. And it makes a very active street front, and really enlightens all of Monument Square Park. Up above, there are 18 stories of residential space, all of the residences have essentially floor-to-ceiling glass in the living rooms on the corners, and wide glass also in the bedrooms. So the apartments are pretty typical size for urban apartments today, a mix of studios, one-bedrooms, and two-bedroom apartments, and a lot of natural light. This facade faces south. If I move around the building to the next exhibit, Exhibit A3, we've come around a little bit, this is Liberty Street, and we're coming up Liberty Street, we're seeing the building more at an oblique angle. And we drew this drawing to show, as you move around the building, how it opens up, and these views to the east and to the north, get views of the river, and on a clear day, you might even be able to see New York City from the top of that roof terrace. I also want to show you this view because the four-story podium defines this very civic base that addresses the park. And then the upper stories are separated from the podium, they float above the podium by this amenities level. All of the common rooms, the exercise rooms, the common kitchen, some offices and work-study areas for the residential amenities are on that floor, which opens up onto a roof terrace that overlooks the park, which we think will be quite exciting and a nice amenity for the residents. If I take you back into Monument Park, Exhibit A4, and stand right in front of the Hellbridge Hotel, you begin to get a sense of the possibilities of what this street can become. One of the things that the zoning requirements dictate is that any building that's really tall have some sort of a windbreak, some sort of a canopy. This long canopy here that stretches out over the two entrances is about 13 feet deep and provides a very civic gesture to bring you into this double-height lobby with a video board here that is displaying what's happening inside the theater, perhaps what is the performance that's happening that night, or coming performances. And so that's the primary entry for the theater. The residential entry is over here, and as I had mentioned before, two levels of rehearsal space, one level of office space, and residential amenities there. One other facade that's equally important is the Bayard Street facade, and that's the facade that's formed by a seven-story, 75-foot-high parking garage.
A5. I'm sorry.
Exhibit A5, yes. And in accordance with all of the zoning requirements, we have screened this garage with a facade that is taking its proportions and its openings from nearby buildings. The garage is made of precast concrete, and as you see, the front facade here is an intricately colored concrete that is a reddish-brown, that's drawn from brick buildings nearby, City Hall, including one of them. The entrance to the parking, I'll let Chris Roach talk about, but also the entrance to the bike are shown here. And then the majority of all the street front there is this transparent glass storefront, which is, looks into the rehearsal space for the American Repertory Ballet. There'll also be an ATM for the TD Bank on this facade. So we think it's a very active facade that activates the street. The sidewalks are 19 feet deep here, and deeper on Livingston Avenue, so we think it's a very good, complete street. The building divides itself into a base, a middle, and a cornice, and then the openings are accented by these vertical banners, which will not be temporary, but be permanent, and advertise the constituent members of the cultural community, George Street Playhouse, the Crossroads Theater, the Mason Grove School of the Arts, and also one for the TD Bank. So that's the Bayard Street facade of Garage, and then I'll leave you Exhibit A6 with an interior view of the second theater, the most flexible theater, as Chris alluded to, a state-of-the-art theater that can have stage sets done digitally or by hand, with 253 seats on the two levels below and the balcony level above. You see the grid that enables all of the lighting and the technical effects that happen in theaters today. Thank you, Martin.
I just wanted to ask here, one of the UConn's, excuse me, refers to the design guidelines in the redevelopment plan, and is it your opinion with respect to all the design criteria that's in redevelopment plan, and what's been incorporated, this in, not only interior but exterior-wise, conforms with those guidelines?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Excuse me, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I?
I know further questions for John, so.
Just something I needed to, I did mention, within the housing component, there is a 20% set aside, which we do with all of our projects, for affordable housing, and that would be, obviously, follow all the requirements of the state with respect to it being the same types of units that are at the market rate, in a matter of size, finishes, and access to amenities.
If there are no questions for Mr. Martin?
Mr. Kelso, can you speak to whether or not there needs to be any additional screening or landscaping at the base of the parking structure? I know that there was some testimony about perhaps some visual elements to it that allowed a seat, could you just clarify that?
Yeah, I think, go ahead, John.
I'll go back to the Bayard Street rendering. This facade, the door to that connector, and then all of the frontage that's dedicated to the American Repertory Ballet is transparent, and it's, we treat it like a storefront, we want it to be very transparent. The sidewalk comes right up to that. The bike room and the ATM that are happening here will also be transparent, the ATM will look like an ATM, but the bike, the door to the bike area will be glass, and then the stairwell that comes down, the core that serves the elevator and the stairs for the parking garage also has a glass front and a glass corner. So in terms of seeing the activity of people inside the building, all of that spills out on the street. What you see in this rendering are a proposal for two or three street trees along there. The sidewalk is generous enough to do that. We've debated back and forth with the city officials, the wisdom of that, with view angles for cars and so forth, but that certainly can be part of it, and Chris is going to speak a little bit toward that in his testimony.
No other questions for Mr. Martin? It's time I call Mr. Christian Roach.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name, please?
It's Christian Roach, R-O-C-H-E.
And do you sort of know the name of this man?
I do.
Again, for purposes of continuity, I would just ask you to go through all of the civil engineering aspects of the plan, and obviously we need to answer questions, and any particular items that were in the city planning review that you would want to touch on?
Sure. Just as a housekeeping matter, yeah, he has been qualified in the past as an expert. Have your credentials changed since the last time you were qualified by the sport as an expert?
They have not, but Mr. Kelso got my name right today.
Third time's charm.
So this next exhibit is titled A7. Before we get into some of the site circulation features, I very briefly want to touch upon the proposed subdivision plan as part of the project. The entire redevelopment area is approximately 1.9 acres, and it's currently comprised of three lots. There's Block 12, Lot 2301, which is 0.78 acres, that houses the two theaters. There's Block 12, Lot 1501, which houses the Cultural Center parking lot, that's 0.38 acres. And there's Block 12, Lot 1301, which is the TD Bank site, and that's 0.72 acres. What we're looking to do is reconfigure the lot, going from three lots to two lots. Our redevelopment project will be situated on proposed Block 12, Lot 1502, which will be 1.36 acres, and the TD Bank lot will be proposed Block 12, Lot 13.03, and that's going to be reduced to 0.52 acres. Both of the new lots completely conform with the redevelopment plan, the requirements, and the underlying zoning for the lot sizes. What I'm pulling up now is Exhibit A8. It is a rendered site plan. I'm going to go over some of the site circulation, the parking garage, and then I'll briefly touch on some stormwater management utilities and landscaping. The proposed parking for the facility is located off Bayard Street. Bayard Street has a one-way orientation, vehicles will be coming up on Bayard Street and making a left into the garage before following a counterclockwise movement to get up through the seven stories. The garage has a total of 344 parking stalls. We are asking for one waiver relative to the parking stall dimension size. The redevelopment plan calls for the parking stall width to be 8.75 feet or 8 feet 9 inches. We are proposing 8.5 or 8 feet and 6 inches. The 8.5-foot dimension is very common, it's very typical for most of the parking garages, not only in New Brunswick, but throughout the state of New Jersey. As far as the parking and the parking stall count, there are 344 stalls in the garage. In addition to that, there's plus or minus 38 parking stalls on the surface level of TD Bank, and beneath the garage, the reason I say plus or minus, we're still working with TD Bank, the finalized layout. But the overall required parking, based on a shared parking analysis, for the development area is 208 parking stalls. When you add together the 344 parking stalls in the garage and the 38 parking stalls
parking stalls on the ground level, that puts about three-hundred-and-eighty-two parking stalls, so we're well above what's required from a parking perspective, based on some of the conversations we had previously at previous board meetings. The reason we're over the requirements, we really feel there's a need for parking in this downtown area based on our conversations with the parking authority. Another circulation improvement we're proposing is a new drop-off on Livingston Avenue. The new drop-off is approximately one-hundred-and-fifty feet long, which accommodates six to seven cars. There's a current drop-off out there, if you've been out there today. The one encumbrance of the current drop-off is between the drop-off and the actual roadway, there's a long curb line. So what that does is precludes vehicles from kind of entering and leaving the drop-off area on their own schedule. If the first car in the drop-off area is taking an extended period of time, all the other vehicles behind there have to wait before leaving the drop-off area, so we feel that's a nice improvement that we're offering. The other thing we're doing is we're creating a new proposed mid-block crosswalk to allow more safe pedestrian access from the Heldred site across two theaters. From a loading perspective, all of our loading operations will be performed off of Bayard Street. We have two different loading docks in the building. There's a proposed loading dock, which is going to service the residential operations, that's located in the northeast corner of the garage. It'll have the same movement as the vehiculars entering the garage, one way on Bayard Street, making the left in, they'll be able to head in, and they'll be able to turn around before leaving on Bayard Street. And we've designed this loading dock to S U forty, which is forty-foot box trucks, which is going to be the preferred vehicle for loading operations for the residential. About once per week or so, there will be theater operations, loading and unloading within the parking garage area. That operation will consist of the vehicles coming up Bayard Street, going past the garage, and then doing a reverse movement into the loading area. The loading area has been designed to accommodate two tractor-trailers. I mentioned this is a very low occurrence, happening about once a week, that we coordinated and performed during off-hours to minimize the impact on the street state as well as the pedestrian access. And when we do do these loading/unloading operations, we flag them out to maintain safety for passengers. From a landscape perspective, Mr. Martin mentioned, one of the things we committed to at some of the previous meetings was adding some street trees up on Bayard Street. We're looking at adding about two to three trees within the sidewalk area in front of our site. These trees will be located outside of any site triangles to make sure we're not inhibiting any vehicular movements. The last point I did want to mention briefly on the garage was, we do have a thirty-foot-wide garage entrance, which is to accommodate the truck movements. That's typically a little bit larger than we have in a parking garage, but one of the added benefits to that is it increases the visibility for vehicles leaving the garage as they interface with pedestrians. It's a much larger window, it's much easier to see. You don't have that surprise scenario where a pedestrian kind of jumps out around the corner as you're looking to leave the garage. Stormwater management, the entire site is impervious today, having impervious coverage by more than a quarter of an acre, so we're not required to install any stormwater retention measures or quality treatment devices. We are installing some new storm lines, captured runoff that currently falls in the Cultural Center parking lot, picks up some roof drainage from State Theater before going out to Bayard Street. We're installing an all-new storm system within the garage area and taking the new pipe all the way out to George Street. And the reason we're doing this is the city system right now combines stormwater and sanitary, or domestic waste, together in the same system. We feel, after talking to the city engineering department, the right thing to do is install a new line over to George Street. Utility-wise, most of the main infrastructure for this project is located along Livingston Avenue. That's where our largest water lines are, our largest sewer lines are. There's twelve-inch water lines there now, twelve-inch sewer lines there, and that's where we're going to be connecting our utilities for the proposed project along with the gas and electric service through P S E N G. And the last thing, going through my list, is just real briefly on the lighting. We're proposing to maintain the existing light fixtures on Livingston Avenue. They're going to be tempered wherever people move during construction, and then we place back these are standard P S E N G fixtures, you see throughout the city, the same old screw-up on Bayard Street.
Just for the record, Chris, I just want to be sure we covered one point in here about providing testimony with regard to the entry height and width of the structure. I thought I heard you mention, because I'm not sure.
Sixteen feet by thirty feet.
Sixteen by thirty.
Yep.
Yes, there was a question with regard to the deliveries by W B sixty-seven trucks?
Yep.
And I believe you brought in testimony with that previous day?
The W B sixty-seven trucks are the piss-speed vehicle to do the theater performance, loading and unloading, once a week, and those are vehicles that will be making the reverse movement in the garage.
We would share funding. Those deliveries will be made after normal business hours, correct?
Correct.
Done?
Before your board.
Before business hours. I don't know if the board has questions for Mr. Roach?
For the record, I just would want to indicate at this point, the improvements of the agreement that's been made with TD Bank, there are several conditions that have been agreed to with regard to project development, and that is, first of all, that the finalization of the final layout and striping of the ground-level parking that's going to be set aside for TD Bank will be subject to agreement by TD Bank, the Parking Authority, and the City Planning Department, and again, that's still a work in progress. And secondly, that there will be an ATM machine located in, at the entryway of the parking facility, as well as signage identifying the TD Bank and the ATM in that entry lobby. And that's by agreement that we've had with TD Bank as part of the exchange for the subdivision. And TD Bank's representative is here, and I hope I covered everything we needed to. All right, thank you. Oh, sorry, the exterior signage, but yeah. Yeah, there is some understanding about the exterior signage for that as well.
Just one of those banners will be TD Bank. If there's no further questions for Mr. Roach, I'll call our last witness.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Was there, and I apologize, let Mr. Roach, could you go over the lighting plan for the interior of the parking structure?
The lighting plan is still being developed for the interior of the parking structure, but what we'll commit to, and we committed to previously, is that we'll meet all of the applicable city standards for the candles and photometers.
If that's the all questions for Mr. Roach, thank you. At this time, I have a call, Mr. Daniel Disario for testimony.
Can you raise your right hand, state your names, by your last name, please? Sir, Dan, last name is Disario, D-I-S-A-R-I-O.
Do you sort of know the truth better?
I do.
Mr. Disario, have your credentials changed, and also your last name, sign?
They have not.
You may proceed.
Thank you.
Dan, you are, you were charged with the responsibility to do a traffic analysis as a result of the proposed project, is that correct?
Yes.
But I would then ask you, so if you could briefly go through the process by which you conducted that and your conclusions with respect to that.
Certainly, as the board members know, essentially, this project consists of taking down two theaters and replacing those with two brand-new state-of-the-art theaters, as well as some residential and office. So from a traffic impact perspective, in terms of changes of traffic attributed to the property that's in question, essentially, the difference would be created by the office that's proposed, as well as the residential. If you look at published trip rates and apply those to what's proposed in terms of the amount of office and the amount of residential units, you're talking about, on average, about seventy vehicles coming into the site and fifty vehicles exiting the site in terms of a difference during the weekday morning peak hour, so an hour between seven and nine in the morning. And then similarly during the afternoon, as it relates to the office and residential that's proposed, on average, you'd have about fifty-five vehicles coming in and eighty vehicles exiting. That equates essentially to a little more than one new vehicle every minute during those peak hours. And I can tell you from a traffic impact perspective, it's reasonable to expect that area traffic operations will not change significantly as a result of that level of traffic generation. There have been some previous analyses done of the intersections surrounding this site. All the intersections surrounding this site essentially operate at favorable operations, and we would expect those operations to continue with this proposed project in place. The only other aspect I'll touch upon, and I don't think Christian touched upon in his testimony, is the fact that currently along Bayard Street, you have two curb cuts, two driveways that access this property. This proposal is to consolidate those two curb cuts into one curb cut, so one driveway will be serving this site along Bayard Street. That's an improvement, not only to the motor and public, because it's eliminating one point of conflict, but it's also a benefit to pedestrians that would be walking along the site side of Bayard Street, because today they're confronted with two driveways, while in the future with this proposal, they'd be confronted with only one driveway. And certainly, that's a benefit both to pedestrians and the motor and public. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any further questions?
Or any questions?
Thank you for your time.
That completes our presentation.
Before we open up, any comments, the board, any public comments to the board, anything to say?
Mr. Patterson, I guess I have two questions. In the whole D packet, there was some indication regarding, some questions around the bike storage, was that resolved to, to some fraction?
Yeah, I think that's been resolved, make sure they're in the right places, and they'll be available to both the residents who are there and some of them may just be visiting on, you know, coming downtown to show you something.
Seeing as the board has no questions, we'll open up to public comment. Everybody in the public step forward, say your name.
Raise your hand, state your names, by your last name, please.
Charles Kratville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
And do you sort of know the truth better?
Yes, I do. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having this hearing. I want to just say for the record, it should be said, what changed between the March first meeting and this meeting? At the last meeting, your attorney said that everything was cool, there was no need to have a refusal, and apparently that's changed. So I just want to hear for the record what changed and why, how?
I'm not sure what they want to say, but.
I mean, we understand there was an issue there, Mr. Patterson, can you address that?
We all went back after the meeting and reviewed it further. The issue you brought up at the last meeting was, brought up at the spur of the moment, so we thought it was a good thing to go back and take a deeper look at it after the meeting, and what we did, we went back and made the decision that, yeah, there probably was an issue there, and that it would be best to go back and redo the hearing.
Terrific. I'm glad you're doing it, you're doing the right thing, and I hope that we don't hear that again, that somebody's job at Rutgers is so far removed from this work that they don't, that unlike any other position, that they no longer have a conflict of interest because it's Rutgers or because it's a small-time job. I think that you set the right precedent by doing this over again, and I thank you for it. So I won't belabor the point, but I do want to comment on A4. Could I see A4?
Sure.
Thank you. So I just want to ask, there's not a, something I don't know about planned for here.
That is, that is a misrepresentation of Swan Spring Street.
I thought I recognized it. Okay, so that's not, that's not there, okay.
I've looked at it a couple times, I think it's time to wipe it out. I didn't like that.
I wanted to ask about the pedestrian link. I guess we'd go through, starting at Bayard Street, and then, what, like for instance, what hours would that be? Is that going to be open to any member of the public twenty-four hours a day, or?
I think so. I mean, as long as the parking garage is open. As long as the parking garage is open, it should be for people to traverse that, sure.
So like, similar to the lobby of the wellness center?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I heard, I thought I heard mention of one floor of office space, is it one floor or two floors?
Two.
Two floors, okay. And then the, well, so the project is expecting to apply for and receive a long-term tax exemption, that's fair to say?
Yeah.
Okay, and?
Pilot.
Right, and so can I hear about the financing for the project? It was, much of it has been mentioned, and so I guess I'll mention what I know, and you can tell me what I'm missing. Seventeen million from Rutgers, Penrose is going to borrow forty-seven million from Citibank. Believe that George Street Playhouse has kicked in a million, or no?
Members of the board, I mean, I give leeway to Charles here all the time, but.
I mean, it's not relevant to site planning.
I mean, I think it, I think it is relevant, the city's going out of its way to give a tax exemption to the project, and it was testified to some of this financing stuff.
This is out of our party, we're simply here to determine whether or not the project as proposed fits with the master plan of the development that we, you know, that we've been working on for several years, and certainly we have determined that this project, at least two times before tonight, it has met that. As far as the financing goes, the assumption would be that it's being done by, in a responsible and reasonable manner, that most of these projects, these public-private partnerships are done. So we're here simply not to determine how the financing is coming together, we're here simply to determine whether or not that project meets the criteria that we have set forth as a planning board.
With all due respect, I wouldn't make that assumption that it's, it's good, but can I just get the total development cost, at least? What is the total?
I don't have those.
Hundred and seventy-three million dollars.
Hundred and seventy-three million dollars, okay.
Some odd change.
All right, and I'll follow up with the developer to find out the specifics of it, but can I just hear the long-term, who will own this?
Well, it's.
I understand it's a hundred-year plan for.
As I stated before, this is a public-private partnership, but this was regulated by the developer, which Devco, so that would be.
The city of, I mean, check out, the city of New Brunswick own the land.
Okay.
The Cultural Center infrastructure, which is the sixty thousand square feet in the rehearsal spaces, will be owned in a partnership that includes Rutgers, Devco, the New Brunswick Cultural Center, and the county. Devco will be part of that partnership for thirty years, and Rutgers, the county, and the Cultural Center will have a ninety-nine-year interest in that partnership. And Penrose will own in fee simple apartments, and the county of Middlesex will own its two floors of office and rehearsal spaces and public spaces in fee simple, so forever, until they decide to sell them.
Okay, so I think I got that. Only question is, what happens after ninety-nine years for the partnership? Does it dissolve? Who gets to own the theaters after that?
Do you remember? No, I mean, I got to get you that information, because we've kind of moved out of it, so I'm not sure.
Okay. I know it's a long way back.
I'm not sure if it's two or three of them that end up owning it, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll find out tomorrow, homey tomorrow, which.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for answering my questions, thank you for having the hearing, and have a great night.
Any other public comments? Seeing as there's nowhere we can proceed from here.
The board look to make a positive recommendation on the application that suggests incorporating the following conditions: compliance with the terms of the D and R engineering report dated April tenth, two thousand and seventeen, submission of all necessary easements across access agreements reviewed and approved by the board attorney and the city engineer upon filing the same, payment of site performance bond amount to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer, submission of site inspection escrow for engineering inspection fees amount to be calculated pursuant to Title sixteen, twenty-four, one-sixty, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles thirteen oh four and thirteen oh eight, issuance of R O D O, any permit from the city engineer required, compliance with the terms of the city planning report dated May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, payment of redevelopment fee available to the city of New Brunswick, plenty of USG funded for all suspended post-pool reviews, payment for any other fees to the city of New Brunswick related to development or use of the project, payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, Middlesex County Plenary Board's approval of waiver, real soil conservation district approval of waivers, submission of any other agency with jurisdiction, filing of subdivision in accordance with the Mount Filing Act, filing of a lot consolidation deed. deed. Submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos offered at the hearing. Some architectural plans comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. The WB sixty-seven trucks, she'll make all deliveries outside of normal business hours, and to incorporate the April tenth record into this hearing.
Make a motion to approve.
What about the May first record? Point of order, something.
The May first meeting didn't happen.
The special meeting didn't happen?
You caused it not to happen.
It happened.
No, it didn't.
That's what I've been saying.
No, it didn't happen. No, Charlie, we had five members, we had five members, and we determined that Mr. Caddisnada's issue did cause a conflict on his core members, that's not enough for a quorum, so the meeting didn't happen.
Okay, well, there's some comments I'd like to make, but I'll save them for the end of the meeting.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve what the conditions enumerated by plan. A second.
Pierre Chekko?
Yes.
Claire Barber?
Yes.
John Ficellino?
Yes.
Cole Burgos?
Yes.
Suzanne Ludwig?
Yes.
David Tennant?
Yes.
That conclude our meeting? Is there other matters of interest to the public?
Well, and we have a resolution to memorialize.
Ah, sorry, sorry, okay. Resolutions for memorialization, cultural center, redevelopment associates, Urban renewal LLC.
We've been through this so many times, able to draft a vague resolution that we anticipated would be this, and it was also one, just for Mr. Cradwell, for the record, it was also one drafted in anticipation of the possible denial of the project. We're passing it up to the approval. We want to take a few moments to review that, and if we decide to acquit.
Mr. Chairman, there were two additions that I'm recommending to the copy that you have, and that'll be in the final form on page three. I'm asking that you have paragraph thirteen, based on the testimony that's provided, that a waiver for the size of the parking stalls in the proposed garage facility is requested and found by the board to be appropriate. And on page six, to add paragraph twenty-nine, the final striping of the TD Bank parking lot will be subject to tax review approval. Mr. Secretary, if those two are appropriate as well, I would ask that the board chair consider those.
Those changes that were, that you just enumerated?
I just want to confirm that they weren't already in one of the reports that's being incorporated as well.
I have to pull those out.
I'd say they're included, then. Copy that the board members have also on the fifth, whereas paragraph on page one, the number eight be included on the second line.
Counselor, does paragraph three, page two, barring modifications, so that's approved, does not require any variances? Is that waiver considered a variance?
No, it's not. It's a design waiver, the standards are different.
Yes.
The change I'm returning is saying outside of normal business hours instead of after. Be on page five of eight, the word after, we change to outside of normal business hours, is that correct?
Yes.
Suggest a motion.
Yeah, a motion to.
That was before.
Resolution to memorialize the boards' action.
Okay. Resolution to memorialize the boards' action.
No, it's a counter.
Motion to approve.
Pierre Chekko?
Yes.
Sarah Barber?
Yes.
John Ficellino?
Yes.
Cole Burgos?
Yes.
Suzanne Ludwig?
Yes.
David Tennant?
Yes.
Are there any other matters of interest to the public? Once again, members of the board, Charles Kradovil of New Brunswick, you know me, I, since I put it on the record at the May first meeting, and the record's being thrown out, I just do have to say for the record that I don't think it's appropriate for the county government attorney to be representing private developers here, especially when the county is a partner, a financial partner in the project. And I also had enumerated some potential conflicts involving the New Brunswick Housing Authority, which though it was not mentioned during the presentation today, I understand is also involved in this, and indeed, approved it, and that the person who reviewed it at that authority, at that agency, is the executive director, and that executive director has a business with the son of Devco's chairman. So, that was something that stood out to me as a potential conflict, and I've been asking about it, and I do want to put those things on the record. Thankfully, the planning board has cured the conflicts and done the right thing, so you should be proud of yourselves for doing that, and thank you for doing that. But I do want to put on the record that there are other conflicts with this project, and I hope everybody's aware of those and keeps an eye out for those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradwell.
Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.